It is four o'clock and this workshop session is in order. And at this time, we will move right into the presentation of the Kerrville Housing Study and Strategic Plan. And I know we do have a speaker to that after the presentation. So, Sherry?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a presentation of the Kerrville Housing and Strategic Plan 2019 as recommended by the Kerrville 2050 Plan under Chapter Six, specifically Act item H1.1, which advises the city to develop a citywide strategic housing plan with emphasis on affordable workforce housing. Development of this plan was a nine-month process that began in January, which included formation of the mayor's workforce housing task force, several meetings, and engagement of housing consultants who are industry experts that routinely perform housing studies and prepare strategic plans. The adoption of this plan was recommended by the task force. It is my pleasure to introduce Steve Spilett, President of Community Development Strategies.
Great. Thank you, Sherry, and greetings to everybody. It's good to see you all again, and it's a pleasure to be back to talk about the results of our work over the last few months. So, Steve Spilett, President of CDS Community Development Strategies, I think I've met with all of you at some point during this process. I'm not a stranger at this point. But just as a reminder, we were -- it was important for us to have the understanding, it was communicated by Council and by the Housing Task Force, that it was important for us to understand that our work was coming out of the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan, which directed the city to have a housing strategic plan done. And so, we were building upon the work that had been undertaken in that planning effort, which was pretty impressive. There was a lot of housing research and analysis that was in that, and so we were kind of updating that and building upon it to conduct our work. So, we have the most recent research findings, analysis, all from sort of late spring into the summer of 2019 related to your local housing market. So, just to summarize kind of what our activities were during this process, we took a lot of secondary source data. That's the sort of fancy term for saying we looked at the census, we looked at employment data, we looked at real estate data that others had compiled and gave to us or that we could access to analyze, to understand what was going on with your local economy, your population, and your housing market. But we were marrying that to a great deal of primary research where we visited, conducted two research visits. We had a chance to talk to each of you about housing in Kerrville. And we also went out to the real estate community, builders, developers, realtors. We visited apartment complexes to talk to the leasing managers. We talked to others involved in the housing market here at one way or another. And we also talked to a lot of your major employers. Because this was a workforce-focused housing study, we wanted to make sure we had a really good understanding of the types of workers that you have in Kerrville, what the trends are as far as the size of your workforce, the profile of workers, their incomes, et And we also went out to make sure to not just, for example, visit leasing managers, make sure see, visually see what kind of housing you have here in Kerrville, so we have a very good mental picture of what's going on. And the other aspect to our research was an employee survey that, I'm trying to remember now the number, total number of respondents, but we had a great response rate, I think it was around seven or eight hundred, 750, thank you, of total employees. That survey went out through the employers who pushed it out to their employees. And that's a very, for a town this size, we were very pleased with that response rate, and that led us access your workforce directly, to get input directly from them. So, very, very helpful. So, just to summarize our findings on the research and analysis of your economy and how that affects your housing market. Until just the last few years, you'd been having population growth that was outpacing your job growth, which kind of, you might expect that because you have such a large influx of retirees into Kerrville, who are not necessarily dependent upon what you have going on in terms of your job market. However, you did, your job market was starting to accelerate in the last couple of years, where you're having, starting to have net job growth due to some employers who were adding jobs. James Avery is a good example. That said, you are, you do, your market overall does skew older because of the retiree population. Forty-two percent of your households have a householder who is, who, that's basically the head of the household that's over age 65, so that's very high. So, we were really trying to focus our research on the non-retiree households, because that's going to give us a much better picture of what your workforce is like. So, 52, over half, just over half of your under-65 households, which are going to roughly correspond with, you know, the workforce households that live in your, in the community, have incomes less than $50,000 a year. So, this was a recurring theme of our findings, is that you, when it comes to the job market here, you are a moderate income market. So, that has a lot of impact on the kinds of, and the prices of housing that are in demand here. And sort of correlated with that, 40% of non-senior renter households, so the folks that are most likely to be of workforce age and who are renting, over a third of them are what's considered cost-burdened. So, that means they're spending over 30% of their gross monthly income on direct housing costs. So, that's kind of a rough situation that a lot of folks are in, in this community. Just in terms of employment, in the last decade, as I mentioned, you were sort of stagnant overall job-wise, and then in the last couple of years, you started to have some increases. 1,100 net new jobs in the last, in the countywide, which is where we can get our best data. 1,100 net new jobs, and then almost 1,700 net new residents, and about 800 net new households in Kerrville. So, not super dramatic growth overall, but it is growing. Now, something that's very important to understand is that are the kinds of employment sectors that are growing in the community. You're, you have a couple different categories, especially when it comes to wages of your growth, your economy growth sectors. Construction and manufacturing have been growing relatively strongly last couple of years. James Avery fits into that, because they're our manufacturer. And those are going to tend to have more middle-income wages. Sometimes manufacturing can even have high wages. I would say your manufacturing here is a little more middle-income, yeah.
Middle-income.
That's roughly going to be, say, anywhere from, you know, high 30,000s to 40,000, up to, say, 75,000. So, those kinds of ranges are fairly typical. You know, it depends on the skill level of the worker and their place in the company and so on.
Thank you.
But then you also have a lot of growth in retail and accommodations, and you're going to have more. The HEB will expand, the Hobby Lobby is going to open, et cetera. You're trying to grow your tourism industry. So, those kind of jobs are not nearly as well-paid. So, those are going to be, tend to be wages that are at the lower end of the income spectrum, oftentimes under $35,000 a year. I mean, flat-out, you know, you could be working and still be classified as low income in a lot of these kinds of jobs. And, but that's a significant share of the kind of jobs growing in the community. This is a diagram that attempts to sort of illustrate that, where you have construction and manufacturing in sort of that upper-right quadrant. So, the vertical axis being your, the income scale, sort of an indexed income scale. So, if you're near the horizontal axis, it's kind of, tend to be more your middle-income jobs, whereas those sectors that are in, of lower wage are going to be in the lower half of the graph. And then the ones on the right side are the, going to be the industry sectors that are growing. So, you have construction and manufacturing, middle-income and growing, and then you have those other sectors like retail, accommodations, and so on, that are in that lower right quadrant. Whereas, most of your other sectors are kind of more, fewer have decreased a little bit. Most of them are sort of, as I said, kind of more stable in their overall employment So, that was important for us to know, all right, what kinds of, we've had a picture of the housing market up to the present, and then what is likely to be happening going forward? And so, that kind of analysis tells us a lot about the kinds and prices of housing that will be in demand. So, when it came to analyzing the housing market directly, we found that for rental, we'll talk about rental housing first here. For rental housing, you have a really tight market at all price levels. Even though you've had a couple more upscale complexes built over the last several years, they're pretty full. And the, the single-family market in the upper price ranges for rentals also is fairly tight. So, it just, if anything, it even, it goes from tight to tighter as you move down the income scale. So, when you get to moderately-priced apartment complexes or single-family rentals, there's very little vacant. A lot of the, a lot of the Class B and C apartment complexes are basically full. We heard lots of stories from employers and so on about how employees are having a terrible time trying to find a place to rent when they are hired on in the community and may have to end up living remotely for a while until something becomes available. So, very, very tight market. You've had 340 new multifamily units built in the last 10 years. Two of those were, again, those market rate complexes that we would consider Class A for this market, so fairly high rents. And then one that was a tax credit project, so had income restrictions placed on the tenants and corresponding rents to reach, make sure those folks are, the rents are restricted to make sure that folks in those income ranges are not cost-burdened.
And market rate, what would market rate be? A thousand a month?
Roughly around $1,000 to $1,100 a month for a one-bedroom, and then higher than that for two-bedrooms, and then there's a few three-bedrooms that are above that. But yeah, it's not, is not quite the Class A rents you'll see in a place like downtown San Antonio or in Austin or something like that, but definitely, definitely not, not cheap. And that's what can get built financially feasible for multifamily apartment developers. They don't build for moderate rent, renters. They basically only build at this level of the market anymore. And that speaks to this missing middle. That's a term that we, is used a lot in our, in our world and in the planning world to talk about various types of rental housing that tend to be more moderately priced, because they don't cost as much to get built. But that, you're not really, you're not really providing a new rental stock for, in those price ranges or of those housing types recently, not, nothing, at least nothing in any tremendous quantities. The good news, though, is that rents are not, in contrast to some other markets like in Texas, your rents are not appreciating excessively. So, they're not rising a whole bunch year after year after year. Very tight supply, but it's not forcing rents up that much. We think that's likely because people are aware that the income levels of the workforce here, the folks that need the rentals, is not that high. So, if they push up rents too high, you know, people are just not going to be able to afford it. So, there's sort of a limit right now on how aggressively rents can go up. So, that's helpful. I mean, that's a good thing. People may, you know, your typical investor may say, "Gosh, you don't have a lot of appreciation. That's not very good." But, you know, when it comes to starting to house your workforce, you're, that's a better position to be in. And you will have 240 units soon under construction. Couple of developments, I mean, there's been one that's been under construction and has sort of had some issues. I don't know if there's any news on that anytime recently, but while we were unable to get detailed information on that, on that project or its status, its estimated completion date, but of course, as you all have seen, it's partly there at this point.
I think it's on again.
Is it on? Okay.
I don't know what the dates are.
We tried valiantly to get, to get, reach the developer, and we're not having any luck. So, and then we have another project by one of your local developers. It's going to be a mixed-use project, but will contain a market-rate apartment complex, and the city's been involved in helping that move forward. So, this is the, how, our findings as far as the quantity of demand for rental housing. This is, and this is what you have right now. I should say, this is really a profiler of your existing supply. So, by our count, you have about 1,500 market rate, what we would call market rate units in multifamily apartment complexes that we could get data for. So, this is not including single-family rentals. This is multifamily apartments. You have just under 300 that are classified as affordable, meaning they're, they have income, some sort of income or rent restrictions on them. And then another, just under 500 units that are classified as senior living, for a total of just over 2,300 total units. Total occupancy for what we could get data on is 94% across all classes and 96% in the market rate units. We think there's demand for about 750 more affordable rental units. That comes a lot from the census data on showing how many folks are cost-burdened and need some other, they need, they need a different rental household that's not going to be putting so much financial pressure on them, basically. So, this is a big issue. And the lower you go down in the income spectrum, the more need there is to accommodate those folks. The folks that are earning under $20,000 in income a year is, and I grant it, some of those folks may not be working. They may be on disability or have some other, you know, form of social assistance, but there are people in that income range that are part of your workforce as well.
So, you can't, we can't, we can't pull that out?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
There's no census of working, there's not really a census of jobs comparable to what you see for a census of residents. I wish there was, because it'd make our work way easier. So, shifting to for-sale housing, we were able to get sales data, thank you, thank you, Bruce, to show that the supply of homes on, for-sale homes on the market that are under $200,000 has been shrinking really quickly. And that's kind of a, $200,000 is really sort of a benchmark at this point, because for, in, not just Kerrville, but in many markets in Texas, you know, when you talk about entry-level buyers, people that have middle incomes that historically you would have expected, you know, once they're, they have kids, you know, hey, this is the kind of household that should be able to go out and buy a house. But at the income levels that are typical here, you know, housing that's at or just under $200,000 is kind of what those folks need. Well, that supply of that housing has been shrinking very rapidly as a proportion of the market. We estimated that the median, for the median income, as we calculate it for Kerrville, you know, you really to have, to, for home buyers to not be cost-burdened and using, we basically modeled an FHA mortgage, which was 3.5% down, that they need basically a $180,000 house. So, your, your sort of average worker here, that's kind of, that's what they need, and the supply of those has been, has been drying up. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Obviously, the retiree presence in the market, a lot of those folks are pretty affluent, and so, either if they're buying an existing house, they have the ability to perhaps bid up the price a bit. And then, of course, for new homes to be built, since those folks have more money to spend than most of your local workers, the building industry somewhat caters to them. And the other factor in your market is that you do have a strong investor presence, and those folks tend to be cash buyers. And so, in many ways, they're going to be able to outcompete some of these entry-level buyers for homes in those lower price ranges, because they can show up with a check, and most of those other buyers can't. On that note, the folks that are using mortgage programs such as FHA, there's also, you have a fair amount of older housing here, and a lot of those homes, since FHA and certain other programs require an appraisal inspection, and a lot of those homes are not necessarily ready to pass inspection, or at least there's a question about it. And so, that gives, kind of gives the investors even further advantage, because they're paying cash, don't have to worry about that. So, that's sort of a, you know, piling on of that issue. Now, once you're getting into higher price ranges, once you get above $300,000 in that range, so you're talking, this is, you know, where a lot of the retirees may be buying or folks that are in the for-sale market, that are in higher income wage positions here in your workforce, we didn't really see any major supply constraints. You have, you know, you have obviously, just down the road a little ways, you have Comanche Trace, that is a sort of master plan development that caters a lot, is able to cater a lot to those kinds of buyers. Other buyers are, of course, buying their own land and having a custom home built and so on. So, we really didn't have, in your upper price ranges, much of a constraint. Your real issues are when you're starting getting down to those, you know, historical entry-level price levels. So, here's just a chart, a very simple chart, showing from the data we had, the shares of the homes that are priced 200,000 and below, starting, looking back to 2011, when we were coming out of the financial crisis, 2016 and 2018. So, you can see a pretty precipitous drop in the share of homes in that price range during that time. We think as far as demand for what we would call affordable for-sale units, and we, you know, corresponding to income level, various income levels, you know, once, once you're under, once you're under like 50,000, there's a lot of folks that are really going to have $50,000 of income. Not that people can't buy a house, but it's just going to get a lot rockier. So, to some extent, this is a bit theoretical, but we said that in those, that those income ranges of 20,000 to 35,000, these are folks that technically are already classified as owner-occupied, have an owner-occupied home, so they, they're not renting. But almost 300 of them in the community are paying over 30% of their income, gross income for housing. But you still have over 200, about 250 others that were, when you get above 35,000, that are paying, also paying over 30% of their income, gross income for, for housing. Just real briefly, going over the results of the employee survey that we conducted, we were, the respondents said that they had had a hard time finding housing. The ones that had moved anytime in the last several years reported this, they had a lot of difficulty finding housing. Fortunately, overall, they, most of the respondents, this is not 100% sample now, it's not a scientific, you know, sample, but we still did get that 750 folks. And overall, they're not paying, they, these folks were not paying super excessive prices for their housing. They just had a really hard time finding it. And we found that their sentiment was indicated very strong support for increasing the supply of workforce housing in moderate price ranges. There was not resistance to that, that idea. They did find that Kerrville, the city of Kerrville is a place to live. The city of Kerrville and its immediate environment, environs, was still considered a very desirable place. So, that indicates that by this sample, that if you built additional housing, it would still be, it would be attractive. You're not going to be outcompeted by Bernie or other, other places that are technically within commuting distance, that, you know, this, if you, likely, if you get the housing on the ground and the right, the right housing and the right price, you know, Kerrville's an attractive place that people would like to live. People were, the sample at least, was very biased towards buying a single-family home, even folks that were moderate-income renters and may not necessarily be financially ready to go out into the for-sale market, indicated that the next time they moved, that's what they wanted to do. So, people are definitely ownership-oriented. And something that was also very interesting was that we asked about the smallest size of home. For folks that said that they would be willing to consider moving here in the near-to-middle term, what's the smallest-size home that you would be willing to consider? And they were willing to, even for, even those considering a purchase of a home, were willing to consider pretty small homes, under 1,500 square feet, didn't bother a lot of people. So, in terms of providing more affordable housing, obviously, one of the ways you can do that is build smaller homes. And, and so, that was, that was an encouraging thing, that you're not going to have sort of that market resistance, saying, "I've got to have, you know, a 2,200-square-foot home at $200,000." It's, you know, a bit harder to actually make happen. So, just to kind of summarize the findings of our research and analysis on housing demand, the potential demand, not that this all happens at once, but sort of over the next, you know, two or three years, almost 1,300 rental units, almost 1,800 for-sale units, based on the overall activity levels we've seen in the market and the kind of job growth that's been happening and what we know is going to happen. And that includes, you know, finding relief housing, if you will, for the folks that are already cost-burdened, as well as some recapture of the folks that are working in Kerrville but living elsewhere. And we think that just the job growth that's been announced will, should result in demand for over 300 more housing units. So, that's the state school and the retail expansions that are going to be happening. But the emphasis on that new housing needs to be moderate price ranges. As I said, the retail workers, obviously, and even a fair amount of the folks in, at your healthcare institutions and places like the state school, a lot of those jobs are very much moderate, middle-income jobs, you know, not, not, not higher wage. So, the question arises, all right, well, if there's all this demand that needs to be met, why is it not being met? Shouldn't the market work and make it happen, right? Well, so, we asked a lot of questions about why that is. So, here's sort of a summary of the challenges and barriers that we identified that are kind of putting friction or putting sand in the gears. One, the availability and the cost of the land. You have a lot of sites, obviously, you have a lot of topography here in Kerrville. A lot of those sites are not going to be ideal for producing especially moderately-priced housing, because they just caught, you know, you have to bring in a lot of fill, infrastructure's tough, you have rock, et cetera. So, that's, that's, and you'd have sites that don't have any infrastructure, you know, municipal utility lines or services to them yet. So, that's an issue. Again, just the pure cost of infrastructure and land development, and that's, that's a big issue. You're just a more expensive place than a lot of places to, to get housing built. You've had a history of sort of constrained housing types, and this isn't unique to Kerrville. As the housing industry has evolved over the last several decades, there's been a standardization of housing product. And so, the kinds of variety and the types of housing that historically, you know, pre-1960 had been built in, in communities in the United States, really shrank a lot. And so, you really ended up mostly with, you know, standard single-family subdivisions and multifamily apartments. And you didn't have as much of, you know, small apartment complexes or duplexes, triplexes, and things like that. So, your housing types have been somewhat constrained in the, in the types of development over the last few decades that might have provided some supply at different price ranges. And then, another issue is the qualifications, you know, when you, obviously, if you're buying a home, you have to qualify for a mortgage unless you have that much cash you can sink into it. So, for your entry-level buyers, you know, that's an issue. They may not be financially ready to meet all the qualifications that are necessary to get that mortgage. And so, that's sort of a hindrance for those workers, of which you have, you know, a large, a large amount of them. But also for renters, because most of your professionally managed apartments and a lot of the single-family rentals as well, there's a minimum income qualification for the renter. That's at least, most of the time, it's three times rent on your monthly income. That's at least, most of the time, it's three times rent on your monthly income. Sometimes it's as low as 2.5, but that's about as low as it ever goes. A lot of them also check your tenant history, so if you've ever been evicted, if you have a felony, hopefully that's, I don't think that's a huge issue here, but another one is what's your credit history? And you actually have a certain class of renter here in the community that is a part, part of your workforce, and maybe an important part of your workforce, for which these qualifications, there's really no way that they're going to meet them. And that's because they've been spending the last however many, you know, months or years in the rehab facilities that are in the area, and they've graduated and are now staying here in the community to work in your restaurants and your stores. But we also want to see, well, where are some of the opportunities that we can focus on, that Kerrville can focus on, to try to address the deficiencies in the supply to help meet the demand and close those gaps? Well, for one, you've got a new development code. So when I talked about the constrained housing types, part of the reason, it's not just the financial standardization of the housing industry that led to that, it's also the regulatory environment that was present in most of the country, where, you know, things like triplexes or small apartment complexes on, you know, infill sites weren't allowed anymore. Well, you've been fixing that, and you've, your, your new development code is, is more, more generous or allows a little more freedom for those kinds of housing types to be built here. Is it possible that maybe it could even be more free? Well, I don't necessarily want to get into that, that debate, but at least that's a step forward, and so we think that that's an opportunity that you'll be able to take advantage of. We did see quite a few underutilized or redevelopable sites within the city, within the core of the city. I mean, I guess you sort of have one right across the street, basically. And you have others that are close into the core of the city where you've got services and retail, very convenient for people. And for at least market-rate housing, a lot of folks, you know, there's, there's, there's an element of the market that would like to live in, in the middle of town. And so you have sites also out in your neighborhoods, you know, scattered lots, sometimes even larger sites that could be used for housing and have infrastructure available. You have significant sites, this is an important point, you have significant sites that are in the ownership of the public sector, like the city, or a nonprofit, or an institution like an educational institution, or a philanthropic entity, of which you have some here. And that's a real resource that could be used to facilitate housing development. A lot of these sites, and a lot of these sites have infrastructure available, or easily, relatively easily available. And that facilitates the ability to create and deliver housing at different price levels than might have to be lower price levels, than might otherwise be required if it was just a private developer trying to get, buy a site from another private landowner and having to put the infrastructure and so on in. This is a, this is a very important opportunity, we thought, for, for Kerrville. And just bringing new actors into the market that can help out with your, with your housing issues, that includes some of the philanthropic institutions, the city itself, the, your local employers and, and others, that all have the vested interest in trying to help you improve your housing, supply of housing to meet demand. So I'm going to run through very quickly the, the recommendations that we came up with in considering the results of our analysis, the, the constraints and the challenges you have, and the opportunities. So I talked about all those sites that you have in the middle of town, in the developed areas of town, where it would be well-suited for, for new housing. And so, and key strategy is to increase the stock of moderately-priced rental units with moderate-density infill development. So this gets into that missing middle that I talked about earlier. So this is not like big four-story apartment complexes, that type of thing, except maybe on like a site that's actually in the downtown. But in most of these areas, it's just things like taking a, a single-family lot that's vacant or has a structure that needs to be torn down. Well, you could put a duplex or a triplex there. And those, on a per-unit basis, are less expensive to build than a large apartment complex. It's just different kinds of construction, you know, and you don't, obviously, you don't have to buy as big a site, et cetera. So that's, there's also accessory dwelling units, ADUs, or, you know, in-law units, granny flats, et cetera. That's another way to incrementally add those kind of rental units to the market in your existing developed areas. And also, we think that those infill lots could be used for single-family housing as well, which might be for sale or could be for, for rent. Same, same kind of idea. You can use, for example, you could even make, have agreements with developers that are interested in doing that. If they're willing to constrain their prices on what they build, what they sell the home for, or target those to reach certain income levels, you could create a neighborhood empowerment zone, for example, over part of the city, to offer tax abatements to the resulting homeowners and things like that. So there's tools you can use to help facilitate and encourage that kind of strategy. So you have older housing that, some of which needs a little TLC, although sometimes it needs TLC and people are still asking kind of high prices for what you're, what you're paying for. But we think that the city can use tools, again, and the neighborhood empowerment zone is one, there's also federal funds, like the Home Program and CDBG that can be brought to, to bear, to set up programs for incentives for folks to rehab existing housing. This is more sort of the single-family or small-scale rentals when I'm talking about this, although you can do it for larger multifamily as well, to basically, you know, we'll help you out, we'll give you a tax abatement, or we will subsidize it through maybe the federal funds if you, if you're getting those, as long as you're keeping those units at an affordable level, again, restricting the prices or targeting certain income levels of your, you know, moderate-income workforce. There's also a movement afoot, because the workforce housing issue nationally has emerged as, it's really a pretty recent thing that it's emerged as such an issue that you're seeing sort of innovation happen, like as we speak about this. But there's opportunity investment that's going on in the preservation of, of older, moderately-priced rental housing in particular. And so getting the attention of funds or creating, through the, through the philanthropic wealth that is present in, in San Antonio and the Hill Country, funds that can invest in, in basically acquire older housing, maybe do some rehab, but preserve that housing at affordable rental, rental rates going forward. Again, you're not having the kind of pressure perhaps that we see in Austin in terms of rents going up rapidly, but all the same, it would be good to preserve what you already have. That's the, the most, the most affordable way of, of having affordable housing in a community is work with the affordable housing you already have, so, as opposed to build new. So we recommended that either getting the attention of what might be called impact funds, these are national funds of, of investors that are seeking to do this, that, that kind of strategy, or creating, working with the general Hill Country communities to perhaps create a fund that could conduct those kind of investments. Austin has recently created the Austin Housing Conservancy, which is a form of that. And that, those conservancies have started popping up elsewhere, there's one in the Washington, DC area, et cetera. So we think that this is going to be a growing movement. And the nice thing for investors is that affordable workforce housing is a low-risk investment. You know, short of total economic collapse in a community, you're not going to be hurting for renters.
What does, what does that look like in Austin? What, what do those programs look like?
Well, this evolved out of years of effort that the city of Austin, and I was not involved in this, so I'm kind of getting it from third party, but the, you know, Austin's trying to, as it woke up to the reality that it was losing its affordable housing rather rapidly, that there needed to be something set up so that for those older, like, Class B and C apartment complexes that were still starting to raise their rents a whole bunch, how can we stop that from happening and preserve this on, preserve these kind of rentals on a long-term basis without letting them physically deteriorate? Just keep, you know, keep them as not fancy, but very livable, still very livable housing. And so earlier this year, they basically debuted the Housing Conservancy, which has gotten most of its funding through private equity investors so far. But I believe there's also been some philanthropic contributions through grants from foundations that have contributed to as well, but the bulk of its funding has come through private equity, equity investors in this.
Thank you.
I think you're going to see that model evolve. I, I don't think that, that what it looks like today necessarily is going to be the financial or the funding structure necessarily that what you'll see these kinds of things have several years from now. So I think it's going to be a growing force.
Thank you.
We know that the, in terms of especially housing targeted at lower-income renters, again, these are, you know, might be your retail and hospitality workers and so on, who are, you know, definitely in the lower end of the, of the income spectrum, that the new housing created for them, the, the biggest program that has been taking place nationally, and you've had some here, has been through the low-income housing tax, the federal low-income housing tax credit program. We encourage you to continue for, for projects that meet your quality and the developer sort of credibility standards, continue to support those. We know that we can't rely on that for large quantities of housing because it's a very competitive program. You rely on the state, T D H C A, the State Department of Housing, to award those tax credits for, for eligible projects, and it's just very competitive. But we, having community support, stated community support from council and from your overall community, your employers and other community representatives, is very important for them to have a chance to compete. So we strongly urge that, that you support additional LI-Tech applications, to use the sort of, an antonym.
Stephen, I, I don't want to, I don't want to limit the, the, your discussion, but if you'll move through those last items, so we can go to some questions and so forth.
Sure. Okay. We encourage the council to adopt an official incentive policy for workforce housing development. This is going to be especially useful for what we call greenfield sites, where they have to put in new infrastructure, public infrastructure, like water sewer, storm drains, et cetera, where the city can have an official policy, stated policy, of helping developers out with that infrastructure, as long as they are providing, you can do a development agreement basically through a chapter 380 or some other mechanism, that they would be required to provide housing targeted at a certain price range or income level of buyers or renters. Again, this opportunity presented by the public and institutional and philanthropic owners, they can provide land that is below market, plus potentially institute other tools that are emerging, like land trusts, which are a form of permanent housing affordability. So if they're willing to convey some of the land into a land trust, that's a way, that's a vehicle for, a, a new vehicle, but it's, it's being deployed around the nation now to permanently, or at least very long-term, preserve affordable for-sale or even rental Initiate an effort for your specialized renter population. So this is basically referring to that particular population that has graduated from your, the rehab institutions that you have in the area and have stuck around. And we think that that has an economic development benefit because those folks are helping your tourism economy go. So we think that finding a better way for them to have safe, stable housing and help them transition back into the regular housing market is important. This is not just an effort on the part of the city, but we think that your faith-based community and philanthropic institutions and others are going to have to be involved because it's sort of a multi-pronged effort to help, help those folks make that transition. Look at any other regulatory elements you have of your housing and development policies, anything even in the new development code that might be forcing increases in, in development costs for, for housing. You know, this can be anything from parking requirements to some of elements of your building code. Just do a review to say, hey, where, and you may have to work with your local building community to make sure that, you know, things are identified. But, you know, anything that is, you know, increasing the cost of housing and isn't absolutely necessary, you know, review, review for that to see if there's ways that you can reduce. And that also includes permitting and impact fees that you might charge here, you know, those, consider waiving those for, if we're getting affordable workforce housing. And lastly, a kind of big idea, when I talked about the, the difficulty in some of your workforce populations in qualifying for mortgages or even qualifying for rentals, really set up a very broad, broadly cooperative program that wouldn't even necessarily be, we don't think it'd even be necessarily housed within the city government, although city, although the city should probably participate in some way, but your employers, your financial institutions, your Realtor community, your developer-builder community, set up a program and your philanthropic community, set up a program to help folks financially right themselves and get them educated and into a position where they are going to be able to qualify for that mortgage and be ready to strike when a house comes available, and they can compete with those investors that are in your market, or even the retirees, because that's, that's just going to be, I don't, we don't see that issue going away. So this is going to be, you probably have to have staff, probably have to have its own office, and even talking about the idea of having onsite workshops at your major employers for folks that are interested in maybe buying a house. So that's, that's a long-term of, of effort, a lot of work to, to set something like that up, but we think the community would really benefit from that.
All right. Good. We're going to go to council, and then we've got one speaker. Have you done this kind of study for any other cities in Texas?
Well, we've been doing, over the last several years, we've done quite a number of community-level housing analyses, and if, most of those, almost all of them, we make strategic recommendations. So it's very, it's very similar to this, it's just that they weren't necessarily the official housing strategic plan of the city. But we have been doing this, New Braunfels, in Odessa, in San Angelo, Brownwood, Sweetwater, so a lot of communities in central and west Texas most, mostly, but we're doing some other ones near Houston now.
Actually, I knew the answer to that question, but, but I wanted to establish credibility.
Oh, I get it.
For the folks that are here, we've seen this PowerPoint, but here is the, the report. And I want to tell you, it is thorough, it is good, the way you gathered data, the way you interviewed local people, drove around, looked at it from lots of different angles, you've really given us something that we can work with.
I hope so. That was definitely the aim.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, council, questions or observations?
I'm going to start here. I, I would agree. I was very impressed with this report. A lot of this information, we felt we knew, but now we have more backup and support to support the claims that we were hearing. One of the questions I had in your travels, when you talked to some of the employers, you know, it says five of the top 10 industries in employment pay less than the average weekly wage. Did you get any feeling when you were speaking to the hospital or KISD or any of the top employers that they know maybe perhaps a wage increase would certainly put a dent?
Right. Do you have a housing problem or an income problem? Right, yeah. I mean, it's kind of tough to just go directly at them with that.
Right. I just wondered if you had any kind of...
I do think there's a sense that they know that, that what they're paying workers, at least at some employers, is, and especially ones that are looking for, ones that at least have a moderate level of skills, that they do have to, you know, they can't just take anybody who walks in the door.
Right.
They know that... They know that there's, that it's an issue.
So you've got a sense that they do.
Right. Now, I won't speak to like your retail employers and, you know, lodging, you know, hotels and things like that. I can't speak to, to them so much, which of course is where some of the most difficult problem is.
Well, you know, in, in, in the way things work, it, if a restaurant has to pay more hourly wage, I'll pay more for my Caesar salad, but I'll get my Caesar salad. So in a way, I kind of feel like I'm willing to be part of that equation that says, we understand in order to not have a now-hiring sign out front, we may have to pay a dollar or two more an hour. And in turn, we'll all end up paying a little bit for that, but that's how we get people in a house, that's how we get workers, that's so. It's just an observation, so I was curious what you thought about that.
I mean, I basically agree. I basically agree. Ultimately, it comes back to...
Well, since you did all these interviews, I was curious if you felt that you, you got a consensus from them as well, that maybe we're on to something?
I think, you know, in the back, my sense is in the back of their minds, they kind of know it. I don't think they're on the cusp of, compared to like a couple of the markets we've worked in in Texas, like Odessa, where they've known that they have to keep ratcheting up wages, it doesn't solve the housing problem because the crisis is so bad out there. But they know they've had to, they've had to increase wages because they know that they're at that point, and, you know. I can't say that they feel like they're at that point here, but I think there's a general awareness that incomes, you know, incomes are not high. They know it.
Okay, Ms. Auger?
I had heard that Austin was, had a, a program that they were working on, and it may have been just Habitat, but with it, when a developer went in, he had to, he has to build a certain amount of the same, basically the same housing, but at a, at a, he will sell it at a cheaper rent. The taxes will stay, the value will stay the same because the appraisal district has entered into that kind of agreement. What...
Well, Austin has, you know, a much more heavy-handed regulatory environment than almost anywhere else in the state, frankly. They have inclusionary zoning or it's somewhat mandatory or somewhat incentive, depending on what, you know, parts of town or what you're trying to do there, where it's say, hey, you know, if you want to go up, build a building this high, you have to have a certain amount of units that are going to be affordable for folks of certain income levels. You know, one thing, you mentioned the appraisal district, you know, for a land trust, that's actually pretty important because, for, for two things. If you're trying to, if you set up a land trust, and Austin does have a, they are, there's a community land trust that's active there, you need to set it up so that there's an agreement with the appraisal district for not only valuing the home, the tax bill to the homeowner because the market value of the home as it, if it wasn't in a land trust might be at a certain level, and it's important for the appraisal district to value it at the land trust price so that the homeowner isn't taxed out of their home because the home values is, is gone up so much. But it's also important that the, the appraisal district is not providing that as a comparable. Because one thing that happens once you get out of the land trust homes, you, you don't want the land trust to risk negatively impacting the ability to buy homes in the surrounding area because, well, you know, you have this nice new home built in the land trust here, and it's, and the appraisal district only has it for this, and if the, and if a private appraiser is using that as a comp, it's going to screw everything up. So there needs to be an agreement so that, you know, the, the appraisals are being handled in the correct manner, not to screw up the local market and also not to overly burden the, the homeowner that buys a home in the land trust.
I was impressed with what you did, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good stuff.
Parks?
Thank you. I think, to reiterate what Delane said, this is what we heard, this is what we thought we were hearing and seeing, and this is the reality. I do have, I do have a question for staff, but I'll ask that in the regular council meeting.
I'll just, I'll just say you're welcome, and I'll just say that a lot, oftentimes, one of the most important things we do is just document in a credible manner things the community kind of knows, but hasn't, for whatever reason, hasn't been able to sort of assemble, you know. And obviously, the community's not going to be seen as a non-biased third party, and that's kind of the role that we, that we play.
And this plan has specific strategies for implementation, which is important.
I agree with you. I will tell you that in my short term here, it's the best report I've read.
Oh, thank you.
Very well put together. It gives us an empirical device to go to developers with and say, we can prove to you that we have this need. It's not just my gut feeling from being in the business for 20 years, but there's statistical proof now that we've got a market for these homes and these apartments. And I think it's, it's just a wonderful document, and I really do. I, I applaud you and your firm.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's been our pleasure.
All right, okay. All right, let's, we have one speaker, I believe?
Bill Morgan?
Yeah.
Bill Morgan, 1744 Glen Road. I've been a resident in Kerrville 23 years, and I've heard nearly every year that I've been here, particularly with the last eight or nine years, what I've been on, on planning and zoning and zoning, zoning Board of Appeals. We have a bad reputation with developers. I hear the things that are good, I see the things proposed to do, but I would beg the council to meet with the contractors that have grievances. They've been, whether they're right or wrong, they have a problem. I know one right now that builds nice houses for 95 a square foot, but he won't build in Kerrville because of problems he's had in the past. So please, meet with the people that are building the houses. I haven't heard any discussion about that. I don't know whether the land just presented the program as or not. But I think that's where a part of your problem is. You don't see any large developers come in and want to put in a subdivision here. True, we have some going up on the ridge. They're nice homes. They're multiple, but they're local. Perhaps we need a national-type or state-type developer to come in and build the colleges, properties out there, the single-family, or the cities 37 acres. I think until we get that resolved and make peace with the developers, we're going to have a continuing problem. And I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm not, I'm not a builder. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I will, and I will say, Bill, that I've looked again recently at the changes we've made in development services, and streamlining some things, accessibility, knowing right where you are in regard to permit and everything else. I believe, I believe that'll help, and I talked today to a woman. She and her husband have a construction company here, and she was really bragging on her experience recently. However, I hear what you're saying, because I've, I've heard it over the years.
They, the developers haven't heard about the develop, new changes in development. They don't know. That's why I'm saying, meet with them as a group, make them aware of it.
Well, one thing the development services has done, and has continued to do workshops and so forth about the new system and that kind of thing. But still, there's that, there's that need to sit down and listen to folks, I understand.
Thank you.
And Bill, I'd like to thank you too for being part of the solution by being on the code, code review committee and rewriting those zoning codes, which I think are a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, it is 4:58. We will recess and go upstairs for another meeting on a couple of items. But a few minutes here before we, before we get away, if somebody has questions or anything else. I want to say also a good, a thank you to Sherry Mosier, who is on staff to help us in this area and other areas. She has worked with several cities on housing issues and really knows the options. So it's great to have her.
Mr. Mayor, we also have several members of the task force that are here, and so I think it'd be great if they could stand so that we could thank them.
Yeah, members of the task force, if you would please stand.
Thank you very much.
It helps to have the most recent president of the National Association of Home Builders on this task force. All right, okay. 4:59, we go to recess.